The obnoxious one.
Alright, let's get started.
Hi, everybody.
It's only because she was so zillioned, they told me that.
Okay.
You ready?
No.
Hurry up.
Want me to hurry? Can't believe this.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright.
Come on, let's get on.
Let's approve the minutes for...
Okay, wait a minute.
I have moved to approve the minutes.
Second.
I move to approve the bills for June 21st. And you have any questions? Thank you.
One second.
All in favor? Okay. Uh, King County agreements.
Okay, so you have the King County agreement for law enforcement, signed by the sheriff. Essentially identical to what you guys had before. A lot of, uh, maybe to each paragraph, but essentially what it does is just you guys authorize them, uh, to do before the city code violations. Obviously, yeah, you have the authority, state code violations. So the only difference will be it's not a state code violation, just in our own court of doing what they do. Not in jail. They can citations, it goes to the county prosecutors, not just, just as usual. Now, if it's a city code violation, so we have a, you know, an art issue or a panel issue or something that's going to fall into your city processes, then either, you know, when you survive, somebody's going to be the complaining witness, signing as the complaining party, and then they will argue that citations are court records, want to send back to me, prosecute. Um, that would be the only difference. So, mostly what you guys have is sort of all those state code violations, but this will be done, it will be, uh, you know, state code violations. I mean, it's all those two. And it's up to them to mark citations, so like say you would sign it as the complaining party. No difference, but if you saw the record, try me, and you followed guy, and you comped it, you signed it as the complaining party. Uh, same here. Pretty much those two. Uh, and then like say, I'll prosecute those, um, and I'll do that in my current contract with the others. My lawsuit or anything like that, there's nothing you're gonna add to that deal. An hour and a half, sixty months. So add one or two to here. I just want to say that you gave it a time to turn out my part, but I don't think that's enough that you guys want. Anyways, that's all we're gonna do. If you did, I mean, long or you do it for short, it's just, uh, all that it says. And then what we did, we set up terms for attorney sheriff, just to be good to take out the sheriff. And make it fun at the side. Johnny, Neil?
Thank you.
Can we ask a question? Does that, there's a city where it's kind of like all the modern... Well, so the student there are both, uh, issues, you have state code violations and law issues, uh, already. Those permissions, obviously, they have, which also have city code violations, the laws are large, and handles, it's a manager. So depending on the situation, we could call it either one of them. But remember, you're gonna wanna push, if you wanna push guys, maybe it's not, just get to state code violations. Not because we prosecute, it's what happens is if something happens, somebody goes to jail, and if they're in jail on state code violation, that medical problem, it's a parent issue. If they're in jail on a city code violation, they have a medical issue, that's your problem. Um, so we know a lot of people in jail, uh, on city code violations.
Well, can we, can we get some kind of orders that can be sent out to the people, like the ones at your own house? Their dog's snotty out there, they chase me all the way down to my house.
So you can see all, yeah, a little bit, I mean, they actually owe me a, they probably have to, that'd be, that'd be a gravity of going on. And then you can sign that as a complaining witness, that wouldn't have to be a city official, or multiple state code violations, and that's a problem. But you gotta call it a ball, true.
Well, yes, no, I think they're citing it under county violation, I think. Like say there's a fifty dollar fine, and then there's one that actually they hold for the judge.
That's a misdemeanor. So, if you wanna push it, you get to misdemeanors, but they have to, it could be a city code. But just being, like, I'm going to amend the state code, you know, if they can't, they have not, we've got to prepare all the charges.
Yeah, but I mean, is there, is there some way that you could write us up, some kind of letter that the city could send them when we know we're having this decision problem with that family?
And do we do it if it's almost, uh, greedy that we need to go out and...
I mean, we could, could we, like, one of the bills just sent out a reminder that there is a city code on the books? This is what it is.
That's what they have. The education usually better than any people's, uh, I mean, I'd like to see the flyer, the mail, or something, or... So, that, that makes more sense. Well, you can't if you want to, but I think that's the police power of the mayor, so I think that's what's good. But if you want, there's only generally you're here, you want to approve a lot of things for you.
No, it's about this.
So one other question, clarify on that. My, my daughter has been hit twice now, um, by dogs, when she tried her bicycle. She wants to know if she can carry her nine bell over the snake shot, and, you know, the dogs kind of...
Why would a snake shot, it's weird. It's a, it's a collar point.
And she ensures this is a hip hit?
Who cares?
A shovel's leave. And her son was on a bicycle, she got a bike ride around town.
It's not very straightforward.
Several places.
There's this one over here, chasing kids, walking down the street. As a prosecutor, I would never advise somebody to shoot the zillions. You got my...
But it's true, you come with yourself, business class, not that.
I agree, but I would never advise anybody to shoot the zillions.
Are you okay, Tim? Can you hold your charge? You can say you approve the...
I think you do a lot of improvement more on that.
You can just say, please, for instance.
I guess wish our...
Cause you have the...
Yeah.
Why wait for that?
Refreshing memory.
I think that's already...
So, we discovered a lot of that, isn't the utility on the recent out, for basically...
I think you're just gonna discuss what you've done, you know, later on.
No. It's all in there.
Not that it's, uh...
It's, I mean, I wouldn't pronounce the whole, just sort of something, but it's, so what you have is the city law, kind of this, uh, box, I don't know.
Can I switch the question over to you? Does this say that people, for any person that could be fined in prison jail?
So any violation of city codes technically, that's a merit, plus it's a, so that's a basic of actions, that's why, anyway. Or is the default rules?
This is two hundred dollars, you're six months in jail.
That's true.
Oh. So if anybody did any of these things, they could go to jail, or just...
I have, that would be city code violation, either the mayor or Ryan signs the papers, uh, that I'm gonna be prosecuting.
You better be happy when they're over there. Stay better, or we'll be in trouble.
Any other questions?
Well, that's great. I'm very curious. That's a question. Well, talk about it. Oh, I do have one question. And I don't agree, actually, wanna go back to your, with his rules, like deposits, did you catch this? Or not the like deposits, deposits, I apologize. But... Were they mancap? Yeah, well, let's, the sound later, we'll... Oh, okay, cool. So like, that's, well, I can, but people wanna revisit that, so...
Hey, uh, how about amend the budget? This way, twenty-two.
That's this we heard? And we're amending it because we need this... So, number one, we're amending it because of the, um, recovered, you know, the water. And then, just having new eyes come in and see new needs, we need to shift somebody around, or have this, so, really like... So basically, we're just moving on to one, come to the other, okay? On the water, but also, like, the added part of this, like, you look, like, we are different, uh, we've been following the street agents, coming over, or, you know, these other categories. So Ryan and Rex and I, we all set up an abandoned hop out, like, he's gonna hire supply supplies, he's got some busy, working on the maintenance shop, he's down there. He's gonna hire a bunch of steel for projects, that'll be number one.
We got the snow lady, possibly a, a five man for the branch job, the champion made up.
Okay, so yeah, just trying to, should think where the money goes. So, now that the two major...
You know, so...
Exactly, how long more?
We'll do seven. So, it's not, not the water increase, so, so we caution the way that, uh, we want.
I'm cautioning the way that you.
On paper.
And then all the other, right?
Very good. And, uh, if you want to increase...
Water increase, thank you.
Water increase. The action factor.
So, on, I just wanna add, put in, I was gonna do some research, excited to do two, uh, because I kinda have started to do budget coming here. So on the water fund, you can see the difference, we were to raise it, a twenty-five dollars increase, um, caught up, paid off in our budget, where it goes. Oh, sorry, on the street, this is the preview of the new budget coming, yeah, underwater fund. So here's last year's, um, proposed revenue of the sugar earnings of the two thousand, if we increase it to twenty-five dollars, we can have some to happen, that we can dig out and start on a lot of these things, so... And is this within that, as I just raised it, without... The, uh, fiber, the steering, or... And if we go in the future.
And I'm surprised there's a lot more people here.
Yeah.
Everybody have anything to say?
Do you think that twenty-five dollars a month isn't enough? I mean, I don't like, mind go up that, there's so many of these that I can see just walking around the road, I feel like twenty-five dollars, man. But I said, also, I'm here, I could consider, like, perhaps, can you get some, like, there's a lot of people that, that are...
Well, I was gonna tell you, considering the, you know, when you don't raise it at a proper amount, and some hap, some catastrophic happens, the city is gonna be screwed. Pardon my French. We need to raise it up to a proper level, that's what...
We're getting there. Uh, we talked a little bit, had it cut out.
We need to do a one-shot get out there, so you have to run the plan, not trickle in over next year or two.
I agree, yeah, but you already, you're clearly contemplating cities, right? So, we're proposing, like, I'm not, increase this water right now. Our sewer funds don't look as scarce as water. I did talk to the auditor, we have been working in a deficit for the last three years, just to heat it a little bit, look, you're like, oh, yeah, last three years, okay, but, well, water. Um, uh, I need to start. I think we're still kind of assessing water project in the future, as long as we like next year. But, um, a lot of this stuff, I think, I was just thinking, it's, it's really qualified for a whole lot of projects, or, or...
So, I mean, I know it's not... A lot of the projects that we have, that we need, that we identify, are smaller items, really. We can, we can work on a little bit in a while. This extra month will actually go a long ways in less smaller items. That, if, if I'm, if I'm wise with the way that I'm saying it, we can do a little bit in a while, I can do a bit in this new, but, without having to... It doesn't mean there's a lot of extra.
There's already a thing to turn more.
First, we're not gonna get the world's published.
Right, right.
So, yeah. You also have to be published, of course.
So you already published that? Yeah. I'm trying to be, pop out right now.
So anything catastrophic is probably not gonna happen, because we've already went back, looked at all the stuff, and it's taken care of a lot of things. So for something catastrophic to happen, you would have to have all the costs, and then all the, all that same time, and we have that, so, everything is in your paperwork, most of it's in your...
We have done a lot.
We have done a lot this past year.
I don't want, I don't want any more, he's about, our page, a little bit out, so...
Well, I think we just need to keep assessing.
And, you know, and, you know, a lot of maybe, um, a recent country water recovery thing.
So, in, in the new budget, I did, uh, propose, and I did a little more work, to start trying to get two cities, we'll talk about that.
Now, a question on, on that, on this here, um, I've heard, I've heard that, um, well, number one is coming up, as, as now the city handed with, um, uh, vital, uh, vital site, around the chemical, showing up in the greatest net.
Well, number one is being amended.
Fully amended?
It's, it's...
Okay. Well, what's the other one, that you're not, that you're not just very often, uh, or...
We have well two, and well three, we're using, we're using it. And as far as I know, I...
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about this, this happened very...
Where those are not the testing anymore, passing, and I, as far as the losses, I, which, although there was, I don't know, anyways, it needed significant...
Being in the house is not insignificant, that chemical, that chemical is nasty, causes adverse effects, there's also the problems coming out more and more, and the ways it's coming out, and...
For what?
And you need to be, that's just on a spray order, city, they're all coming to you. Maybe you're over my house, talking about it, they got, he got it from a guy. Maybe it was, it was not, it was...
I never did, cause I don't know anything about that.
Maybe, maybe you guys, he might, told him, and we were talking about stuff.
There are wells around us that are having those problems, as far as I know, ours aren't enough. So, as a reminder, you might run over to the pastors, and remind them to not spray, because they are right next to that. I, I did talk to pastors about that, uh, about a month ago, but you might have talked to them a month ago, but... But it is, it's big, deep, through, uh, you know, he's, so, and I went out to my block and said, and I mentioned everything, and he would, and he followed in that one. Okay, so as far as the hundreds, and then, uh, okay?
Do we need to, so you're gonna go here to lobby, to yourself? So, I didn't, uh, start with your...
Do we need to act on it?
Was there any, is there any, so the ratings?
How often do you need to reset? Are you... I mean, we can reset, obviously, I'm spraying. I'll, that's, like, every year, or every six months. I ladder in, or, okay, well, you know, always be one, uh, donation, so...
So here, we got to do, like, yearly, it's, it's possible, living.
And I definitely think we need to, like, stay on the, the, the percentage increase, you know, for, for, like...
We go up to five.
Yeah. So, yes. Okay, I think we should, uh, turn the...
So just in case you have this, and you were talking, being just, going to all that, and it happens. Maybe your parents, where, has still, like, to pay for the transport, transportation money?
Yeah, we had an agreement for the, yeah, transportation line, so you have to, that was in, uh, for, it's, uh, five days, thirty half hours, all of them like them from, uh, L P A, for that, so, you know, off, for the city. And so, uh, what you really wanna do is, we wanna be allowed, we said, this time here, we wanna be allowed to ask questions, we're willing to sleep, before, you know, for, uh, hours, uh, or, uh, we have a right, that would be higher, so, yeah, I would say. And, uh, six thousand eight, something like that, if the last, when this plan was completed, so I use the rules, and you do the main plan, and, uh, the higher places projects, and there's all that, and that's before, uh, that's issues.
So then we pull up the map, and we'll get our... So this first part is all per sign, so, right, it's sort of a sign, so we're gonna drive...
And even, when they answered that you were buying, you're buying per signs or, or, uh, tractor cars, so, they're, they, these, all...
I don't think we really need to put on that.
What, can we start, uh, go through that, the studies?
Uh, the, 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 we, uh, sign one, right?
It's like, it doesn't give them, money to, play a order?
Money for this one, it's a problem, it's, oh, it's, 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 uh, part of the fiscal year, it's a change, starting in July, but, I mean, everyone, and, uh, for, and, uh, so, it's, uh, in, or, in, that's, uh, a little bit construction, or, structures, please. So, that'll, uh, the, the, uh, basically, you're already, I'll get signed, you're already, uh, you're evaluating roads, you should, we've got all our, it's, we think, we prioritize those, but, so, the, the, we apply for, this, the, uh, grant areas, and, uh, a lot of suggestions, for the house, so, we also can, you hear, you, uh, what, you just wanna see them.
Right.
Or it's all, most changes.
So let's just, uh, announce yourselves about this, to do, uh, any suggestions, if there, if you need to add it, it's good, I think it's for good, like, and helpful for everybody to read these, so that, for their, their...
So I was able to read through this, because I came across a few things, and we had people call and say, well, this all's kinda getting jabby, but we do this and that, and it's right here in this one, it's, uh, it's part of this, jump along the road, and this and that, it's all in there. Other than, like, a broke down car that's not registered, we'd like to get an ordinance for that, but, since if your car is broke down, it's whatever on the side of the road, it's not registered, not registered, it's supposed to be, uh, property, so, it's, it's, uh, small streets, so, it's, 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 uh, for, there's a few people in my nation that still, it's, it's, so, how do we go out, talk into them on that?
Ryan?
Ryan, Ryan makes a bad, eh, hey.
Well, he did a sticker, Sharon's sticker.
So basically, that, that means I have to go over and say... So basically, that means I have to over and say.
Well, so, so just, how's the first step to educate, right? And how do you talk, if you're saying, hey, you know, we had a work on this, we had a funny conversation. This is a lot of what I'm just like, and I think some people are inclined to change. The ones that don't, if we're actually running out of property, then we can send a letter. Well, you send a reply, send a, that's fine. Uh, but, uh, you know, a lot of others, if they don't comply with that, then they cite us and see where it's wrong. But the first step to educate, you know, they like to, I think some people are going to apply. They just need to.
I'd like to say, I don't think it's something steady for twenty years. And it's a lot.
That's all, it's.
I mean, be honest with you, how you get educated?
And that's.
What's your time limit?
And that's part of the problem is because there are some people that say, well, I'm not going to do it if they'll eat it. He knows who we're talking about. So it's, it's difficult to get Jordy smooth their camper off the side of the road that hasn't moved. It's been there, yeah. If somebody else isn't willing to do that, so.
Is there any problem with you having to, well, falling out of the right picture, sitting right here in front of that?
That's what he's talking about.
Taking the, so great. And pushing it back into the yard.
So that's, that's a problem, yeah. I think it's fine, like, I, I went through this on Reddit and I looked up a few things. So I'll talk about it. And it will probably make some copies of the approach or lead approach to a few people and say, this is what we understand. We explain to them, give them the opportunity to pick the problem first. But if they can't do that, then we'll proceed.
We have to, what's your remedy if they refuse to do it? Can you actually say, well, that's where you can actually say, I can pound the vehicle.
Well, I've checked with your office to be able to do that. I would like to address that with the property. So, for, for my, it's usually pretty, if they have a little bit of office or, you know, that's just. There's, oh, I'll probably get twenty-five, thirty citations, somewhere around that. They probably issue, oh, I don't know, three, four hundred letters, three hundred letters. So, you know, that's how many you can apply. If you have that twenty, twenty-five, you decide. Then when it comes to me, I have some problems, hey, well, here's what you gotta do. I, you know, I take years as a roster here, a lot of people in jail, being criticized.
Why don't you put them in jail?
All of them in jail. Well, you gotta get their attention, you know, and there's, and, and, but, you know, I remember there's also the people who just can't do it. Well, then we try and find it out.
Well, yeah.
You know, but if people are just waiting, those are the ones that have their attention. Oh, yeah, you see, you want to, uh, office.
Your back order is your business, though. And I know what's back there.
It is.
My, my business.
There was a comment, if you don't like seeing it, just don't look at it. That's what's.
We talked about the big flaws on the side of the street.
I'll let you know why you don't like it.
No, I just haven't over the change, so I get some word from myself.
So I think we have to tell this kind of fun story. But this is where the, the kids' laws are sometimes useful. So we had a situation like, you know, we had a system about hundred years. And it's good that they're catching, they're catching, they tried to work, but it was mine and they cited them. And chief has citations to a cop who's a good cop, and he gets told to do something, and he does. Well, he goes out to serve with that. Well, he served him in the accident, he didn't get the right, I hate this. And he went in front of that and everything, served him the citation, we're all, oh, oh. Why did you do that? He might have done, but it was just like, no, no.
He can't run.
I know where he's at.
So we're gonna work on that. So I think, I think we need to fix the ornaments, uh, cars inside of the, or, or. Maybe the one that they are, whatever, we don't care about that. It's just a little city, right?
What about logs?
That's on the property.
I have to, I, I'm sorry. Okay, you have to serve it.
Why don't you come serve it?
Thirty people in the center of the road, they're off, they're off, they're lively.
They're not coming along, they're not coming along to the point of doing this.
Right, actually, the question is, so. First, why is the meter being able to be? And we have to adjust, how is the meter thing going? Are we, are checking on meters? How many are we checking?
I'm still looking for it.
That's what I was wondering, because this says it could cover that ownership facility. So I'm covering out the third option, et cetera.
Technically, yes.
So I don't want to say they've done that one?
I have to, because I can do all that. Yeah, so I, there are a lot that are just not working. And that's part of the maintenance and getting all the wiring and then getting it working again. And then the reason working again. So, yeah, so where, where are we getting there?
And that's one of the questions, what's a cleaner?
You don't know? I've never seen that before.
It's a, it's a snowing cold, very cold. It's the upcoats and stones.
Oh, I guess that's how it goes.
Sarah, we're just about to.
Ashes and cleaners, like, anyway, it's something, what is a cleaner?
It's the cars in the yard.
I have a list to get out of my cars. I'm so excited. I don't like, I don't think that's what that means. Everyone says that. I have some regular.
I used to have public, you know, power workers.
That's, makes sense.
Which is interesting because you can actually order a drop load of cleaners out of that whole power plant in Yeeville. And they use it for roadways. Roadways. Uh, most trucks up in Yeeville. Every time they take a load down, they stop by the, the power station down there and they get a load of cleaners. They're not as bad as, but the cleaners that we, as little they are familiar with, are great, big, sharp, nasty. Well, it's gonna have a power plant that are smaller and have been crushed, crushed a little bit. They can actually get them for dry, where he's like, I could have them just.
The other thing I found interesting, which I don't think anybody knows, is it's unlawful to burn your grass or weed. So that's why I'm in the fire department.
Yeah. And there's a tiebreaker.
Is that burning my hitcher? We never contacted the fire department. Something that I didn't know?
Yeah. Then you have to call back when you're done.
I will bet money that ninety-nine percent of people in town know.
I have to do that, I have to say, I have to do that. I'm just glad people didn't know that.
We're here, it's like, right? But it's. On the quarter of my six. So we, we want to turn every, every, so we recommend that they call the. Part of it, so, we'll recommend, they'll tell you not to burn, it's a little bit heavy. Because, you know, the, the choosing, that was a point of time that, you know, it's, uh, the same, no drugs.
Now, this is the burning hand, the burning girls too.
I don't think it does, I thought it, I thought it would, like, camp where.
Right now, who is, who's, uh, like, for the, you know, you're just, you know, you're, 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 you know.
Camp where, yeah.
But no, no weed streets, I don't see that. Uh, that you would put the heat with, you know, the trees, that's, that's all.
The other thing I actually noticed was the street cutting, just don't we talk about street cutting, you know?
Were you here?
That's for the record, and so.
And so we already passed on this, right?
Yeah.
So they were supposed to take our, our, the, and I just wanted to make sure.
And then actually, you're not, yeah, there's, and that's certain, that's, that's, that's not exist. And the deposits for the utility that is both the product, six percent interest, available back.
So, so do we have to worry about that now?
Yeah, yeah, you might want to worry about that. You might want to, you know.
But then we strike that provision out of there.
So that's, I don't know.
If you see those pictures, you can go email the best, you know, like, cars, my rest, I'm getting technicals of those. They're pretty easy.
That's, that's something longer.
Yeah, if you just email me, kind of those, what do you want to do?
I thought we had a same law covered, after we did the same law coverage.
Well, in fact, the unregistered vehicle, you know, same law. It's a total situation, your car, like, your car's out, and your car's, you're gonna want to see where it's, or that.
Okay, that's true.
You know, and then depending on, it's like, uh, my, for that also has, you can get a restoration for it. You know, if they're, you know, something like, or, uh, there's some things you can do that way, if you want to, but, uh, well, I can, I already have a, you know, totally down on registered vehicles. Like, it's obviously, well, it's, 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 it's all on the.
Quick question on that, because I hope it is not off. Now, California, you can, if you're on the vehicle, you have to go in for four years, you see, you, you. It's not, right, sure, if it's not off, you don't have to pay anything.
So I don't want to say this for a restoration on that, but like, the city voters, it's a whole black in Aberdeen. That, you have to get a restoration for it. What if I say, I'm sixty-eight, or my car, you know, kind of, two or longer, more serious, that's supposed to be a garage, or, yeah.
So say, the E and B must have a, a way for the, you can sign, if you're working on your car, then you don't have to have it insured. You can, you can keep it registered, but I'm not insured if you kind of inside the way we're saying, if you're working on it. That's, that would apply here, this is, that's still a way to register your vehicle. So we have to do something else, can I do?
Well, and, so why can I, well, we're modifying those because when those are permanent, it's both essential and down and unrestricted. Well, then, they have, they have a vehicle, they have a, 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 uh, the, uh, I mean, I saw that, that's, you know, so, maybe, mostly, probably, broken down, broken down.
City Council meeting attendance, so that's, that's the council, we didn't have, so. And so, we, we have to, uh, attendance and, what was it?
Three excuse.
Three excuse for.
Year.
Year. So, I think, so. Six, six, something like that.
Would we, would you, who does the excuse in, who says the excuse?
So it's a sickness, something, it's, yeah, it's something happen.
Well, I had a meeting that I could miss, and I, I.
There is something that, 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 um, costs something, I'm sure. Anyways. Then I have to, I remember, I have to notice something, because you can hear, oh. I'm gonna, if you don't, yeah, I'm people, but you can, they, I'm gonna notice, oh, that's, 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 that's weird.
Yeah, you can really handle it, which is great, uh, but, I, I already had a community report, other than I wanted to make sure, you know, it's where that we're trying to chase water and super funding for studies, and like, you guys, so. To carry on that, that's, I'll be able to, we, this, this January, the E Q, uh, for our tour, and according to U S D A, we're trying to, and I have that. It's on, it's on, so, just to make sure, what's where, if there's any questions, I guess.
Thank you. All right. Wait, four, four, five, three?
So, back to the project. I don't know, questions or thoughts? Uh, some of the things that I've been thinking about is savings in all of us. Um, if there's not any left over in the budget from one year to the next, do you want to do anything with that? Even in checking, I don't know, correct? Uh, do we, so I just send amounts out of each month to go into saving account, plenty? I, we're, so we kind of have a new auditor person over our account, this is a company that's a different person. And he has said on the water law, there technically is supposed to be ten percent of the payment set aside into a, a reserve. And I have an accounting for, so, it makes sense. Um, he's like, we're almost at the tall end, so not very good deal, but I would like to start saving, only going to reserve the account, or saving the account. So we start kind of building up some, or eight months. So those are kind of the, some of the different things. I don't know if we got a lot of money to put in savings to set, but I would like to start adding.
So how much in the red, if you were where the budget's at right now, or beginning of the reserve, you might have out there? How in the red are you, like, just bills, you're giving me a hundred dollars on that now?
I think old customers are asking, kind of, okay, that's good.
Okay, so why is this twenty-five, why am I checking at thirty-five, forty-five?
Uh, you want to spread out the anger.
What? No, either way.
Were you in that office complaining about it?
Well, I'm, I'm.
I had to write you a check, you wouldn't take it over a bank card.
So, here's the problem, what I want to ask, is, this was already talked about, and they already owed it out, and they can't change what they were gonna do. Because that's what they reported in the paper. And when they owed it, and when everybody said they had enough said, they owed it, and passed this already, you guys were talking against it.
I was just.
So, we just have, so, there's nothing we can do about the twenty-five dollars. So, beyond that, it's what I listed to talk about, we can do another one.
I think Brian just looked at it.
We can have another one, you could do another one in a week, if, if it's, we could pay the money out, put it in the bank, or, or.
I'm not paying it up.
And I put it in for another twenty-five bucks.
Donation.
So you'll have coverage and.
So it's. It's too late, we already talked about it, if we're in this meeting, then we would be.
I really did, you have to look at the reality of some of these, and the reality is, is part of me.
Why are you doing something about it now?
I ain't, I ain't.
I like.
You guys are wanting to show that you're our better government, you're screwing up.
Can you get a second job for me?
Go ahead.
Let's take this dude and buy ground, sue each and sell it.
That's your job.
Okay, Brian, that's the end of your report. End of report. Hey, it's gonna go over again, a lot of the same thing as last, the last one. Uh, we're working on, there's a few other spots on top that fall into driving around, putting load in the car. Have to get there, not the road on top, make it smoother. Uh, a lot of loading going on, I'm destroying the laws, and I've been, now the wind, you know, it's blowing down. When the wind hasn't been rolling, I have it around now, I haven't sprayed your bees.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna be so funny.
You don't seem watching?
And I didn't spray, I just, well, maybe it's, it is, but, but. I have been rolling around and, and, I think, with the, with the dogs and there's, when people, that, that, that.
We sprayed my grass. That's ordered here. I already sprayed.
But I, I've been working on the shop, there's trees missing, and we have a shop now, and I'm suiting it down, there's piles of debris that I'm cleaning out. Working on getting some of those vehicles out where I can, make pictures of them, so we can put on some lost vehicle list. So, I, things like that, I've been monitoring my pumps, uh, that I can not forgive me because I am learning here. And some of what we thought was gonna work, did work, our, our galaxy skyrocketed. And I know why.
It didn't skyrocket, it's just the way.
Everything we saved last month, we, we're, uh, but I, we're making adjustments and.
But it's not a huge difference.
So I, and then it was something that was going through the morning, and it just, as I'm working through the system, it's learning here.
Well, a lot of things have been corrected, which saved a lot of people.
Yeah, so, we're working on it, so, well, there, we're still working on some issues over there, so we need to, uh. Two or three o'clock in the morning, and there's very little water right here.
All right.
Give it thirty seconds, while three kids are on, then I can turn it back down, please.
Question there, so Monday we have our power outage, so will the pumps be on, or the generator?
Our generator will take care of it. It is chill.
Sixty-eight hours.
I am planning on standing by.
They're not, Brian will be out there, everybody.
I know that it works, because I have been standing right there reading the flow meters, and it is kicking on, and boom, and I'm running around pants. It, it's like the alarm, when that goes off, it's, it's loud, and it's.
So how long has the, uh, the transfer cost taken? Cause I can, we need to be, the best.
They, uh, uh, every three hours, when they run drop fifteen minutes, they take it every three hours.
So it's hours, six hours.
So, six hours, according to I, is my maximum. So I can have that over there, and then you can plug in. That, we need to hold up, is, we're still looking for a key to that box. But I think it's on key, or lock. It's locked, the, the plug-in, where you take the generator and plug it into the box, it's a little bit of a.
High lock.
Well, it's, it's a regular key box, but I think it's on the generator. That's the license it is, so I gotta figure that out, so, I don't know, that's.
I would think that if high hours is going on, then.
We probably should have it, well, I mean, and it, it needs to run, I mean, it needs to. So those are things that.
Actually, that's a perfect test, right?
Yes. So we're working on that, uh, I don't know, did anybody notice that the big pile of company out there?
I don't know. On drive to park there.
Just to call it to the street.
No, we need to be there, just we need to be, uh, uh. Brian, something else I would suggest on, or, maybe it's a, easier later on, uh, where we can put it, uh, could it, banks is kind of like a little circle at the top. A little wider than the, than the, the narrow lot, and certainly be around it, or whatever.
Part of what I thought about on the border is, it is a big thing. And it could, did it look like your, your eyes from the south side, sir? I, I haven't, I, I don't, I can, I will put it out there, and it can look. The other slot is, is just on the other side of the disney, but you were thinking.
The, 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 the.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I say, maybe the amount of hours, and maybe most of the centers, city halls, so, yeah, all the corner would work, but I, I have. Yeah, all the corner would work, but I, I have.
Seriously, yeah, you do it by stop and stop, so we got a looking at.
Well. There's people, maybe twenty-five nights in this office house, so I guess a planner is not going to help.
Maybe we should put a intersection. I love race.
So, I will be moving it. It's right there, I don't want to be in the opinion, so I will move it, and I'll move it out of the corner. If it gets situated, and as you drive by. See what you think, and then I'll move it over here, and I'll set it over here on this other side, and see what we do.
Just keep it nice.
Yeah. That, that's my next issue, idiot. Kind of asking me out of the way, but it's still, it is a loan, but the city's not on it.
I mean, I don't like the department, but if we're just on those.
Well, I say, we can set it there, we can try it there, and then I can set it over here.
Well, some of those are probably hard to create, and so, and the way I get everything should be there or there.
Do you have any other things?
I think it may be from Ryan's car, but I don't.
A lot of Brian's car.
You take it forward.
Why don't you play Brian's car first?
So, one other thing I just did, maybe it might be over here, we do. I couldn't tell it. I didn't know if you passed it, Ellen. You can't push through it. So we have an issue, and we've talked about this many times. There is a separate sewer line that ties into our system. Tuesday night, they had an issue. And it blew it up, and now I got involved for three hours taking care of that bug, and I think technically.
It's one private line.
It's a private line, so from, we're, we're next on into our shooting, or there, all the way to their houses, it is right there. So, like, some like, guy has been very good, and I feel like we need to communicate with neighbors. But I, I think that there's a problem over there. Because somebody here, three houses, it is flushing a lot of stuff, and they made an issue. And that's where a lot of, and it's just, you don't, I don't care, but how many times did they say it's on them? There's only three of them on that line, and it locks up. And it's bonds.
On their way.
And, yeah. So, I don't know whether the law is, can we build it for our time? I don't think we can do this.
You can just, you can go over to your house, I don't know if it's with a neighborial, but it's a lot of.
It is.
My question was, like, are you kind of all in, and making an agreement, love and all, like, in a, or?
I think that's a good idea, because two, the houses are saying, it's not us, it's not us, it's the one that will be impacted at the end. And they've tried to talk to us, that it will rule all this time, and it faces, I think we should bring it in.
Can we, can we, do I get an arbitration?
Well, as long as you want to get that vehicle moved, it's not your fault. Right, I mean, there's, there's, being a neighbor, you know, it's taken a real time, and they don't want to. But it's, it's my line, okay? The, the, next one is, I, here's your, was, that was mine, that, that, that was going to have a location, all right? Really, they didn't put the, 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 he did say, but, um, and we've been through that. See, I, Carson was very well aware of that, it's my line.
So, I'm trying to go in. I don't think you're able to charge them per hour, should we?
I would give it a reasonable rate of, you know.
I mean, because there's the, I guess you probably don't use them per, per hour, then.
So like, it was like, I have to, the pool was leaving a part of the pond for hour, 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 day, you pick something like that, and, and, uh, I see reasonable.
This is a little bit considerable, because it was two of us, three hours, and it was raining all night. And if you really wanted to be picky on it, guy said it had hazard pay. He, he turned, but he jumped down to that animal, and whipped the fire hose, and it was flushing backwards to try and knock that in. He was, he was, it is something that is not.
I don't need with no bugs.
I mean, it's going to add, but we would have declared, it's only, but it did flow into center house. It did act at three to the middle of the.
Well, that's the other part, because it went with the years, everyone else showed back a lot, you know.
So I think they did put one in, right? Is there one in between her and? I think there's one in between her and under this, because I said something about this, something that didn't happen there.
They didn't clean it.
Oh, was it just?
They didn't clean it out, because it's current and under this. Uh, but I, I didn't know how far we did.
I mean, obviously, the, for being a neighbor, like I said, it's not your, it's not your problem, so I don't want to get too involved in that. Josh, I remember, he has, you know, broken my, try, hello.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't.
Yeah, you're, you're.
That's what she thinks it's doing, it's always.
So being at first, or if you see that pass out.
No, in fact, he just barely squeezed that hole, that hole back, his, he's, he's.
I was very sorry, I was very.
So, I mean, for my loss, Grant's up here, five, six years, about seventy-five. Yeah, yeah, I was there, I was there, and Grant's, and Grant's.
Yeah, when it rolled free, because there was, there was close to four feet of water in there, and then rolled back down. And when it rolled loose, they transferred four feet of water into what I did, which he was, he got out.
Yeah, too many parents, there are us to get.
I think the next time, maybe, maybe they'll call, because.
Yeah, they need to get. Yeah. That's what I was, it's about.
And of course, the fire hose didn't work. Uh, it could have made a worse problem, but, so we can write in a letter and say, you have to.
You have the door on top, that's in the street.
What's that?
The man who's driving into the, uh, that's in the street.
That was our connection.
Well, there's another we do.
So that's.
Why that is.
Yeah, and I was going to say, this was like, briefly, I was asking, if, if it was in the right way, they didn't do it, so. There's this great tool, you hook it up to a, uh, like a pressure washer, it's got a just cord attached, and you feed it on, and it feeds up forward, and it's everything else, it works absolutely fine. And it blows the fire, and drives it all out.
Well.
And that was, that was.
And that is their connection, but we're working to connect to us, over the middle that hole, and that wall line is there. They're responsible, I believe, we are.
I think that he's right, he's, oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, maybe if they have to, you know, or if they.
I, I feel that two families are living, uh, in, in a little, a little family, but I don't know if they're doing. Feel that, feel that we're, they make the burden for three owners.
It's, it's.
That's what he said, so I, we'll see, but, so I guess that's, that's the end of the, sorry.
So did they call you, did that one you?
They, they called me. Yeah, and I. And I told them, and I'm surprised they're looking here, because I told them, but I would. So the other thing that we noticed, same with the neighbors, it goes back around there, and it will back over to sewers and. Corners, is leaking in that, or leaking in our, um, so that's my next one. That's sitting along there.
That's.
How do we force that issue to exist?
The main, the, the problem, I don't know, it's not.
Different.
Yeah.
Well, this is what I, this is what I, I feel the problem, you just talk to the designers, and shit happens.
We get it, Kurt wants to fix it. He, he wants to go in there, re, rewire it, and fix it, but he can't all over here.
So if it's our fault, it's right.
Someone can shut it, knock, knock, and have it, or, or trace the moment, or, or turn it. So, one of those people, you have to fix it, and it's. So is that ultimately the ditch is going solely, if it's flooding the manhole?
We just put a, if it's plain, then it's usually good to have, um, I don't know.
It may. And one last thing, that's all right, we also noticed when we were in there, there is a pretty steady flow of water in the front. I don't disagree. So, whatever they said, um, they're, they're only seven, twelve, ninety-five, I don't hear them there. We, I think there's more coming out in the back than we can even. So, just let, you know, we're going to be driving in that, we're.
Hey, we're talking about that.
So, yeah, there is, some of the issues that we're, we're finding, that were.
Hey, silver pumps are way down.
Yes, I just, they're down. Yeah, for, of having just waiting weeks further, they're in now, because there's our, the rocks that were not exposed when we actually did the last.
But it's safely down, not cheaper.
Right, it is.
Last week, I got a car three from a personal home, it's been up under to that, or?
It is still raining, but.
Did it, did it any water?
There's still, uh, just, well, I was over there somewhere, a whole bunch of pallets and stuff within the neighborhood. I, you know, I don't know if sort of putting it out in the camera, or putting something to catch it before. I did, and I did catch somebody over there that is out in our community, that was over there. And I didn't want to do it, because this guy told them to do it. And they had, they had a small amount, and he said, do it, go up there, and back here, do it again, and it's. This is for residence only.
Is there a sign that says?
There isn't, and I see, we didn't look that up, it is just.
Are we going to make it that, really?
So, we do need to make this sign. But it says for residents, it means all alone.
And only tree.
It does say, just tree limbs and grass looking, it does say. And it is, is there a fight for something that you love?
Uh, yeah, uh, I think you can ask yours, it's about.
A lot of that.
I don't know, we can get it over and off.
So if we post it in the line, then there, we thought, and they're going to pass on.
Right.
Okay.
So when are you getting to it?
I have a laminator, you should, I love to use it, and I have a, or your signs, it's, it's up there.
I have the high one, right. I can make the insert.
That doesn't work.
I just ruled that's your place.
You're hot.
Woo! Yeah, he's.
I haven't, I haven't, I don't know if it is, guys.
I don't want to hear, be learning well through, and, and learn on, the potholes, it's, perhaps, see me.
And that, that brings up, that's all right.
You're with us, bud.
I know. I just went to that old nation meeting, and I talked to Dusty from the Heraldies. He knows nothing about, did the county not help me this? Did it help, did it help us, did it help? Did it help anyone?
No, they helped.
Well, he's, he says they've been doing some block. Really? He said they've just been doing. But he told me, he says, anytime I, he says, and I says, so I can get on the list next week as well? We would put it on the list, but depending on our budget, what comes through, he says, we'll, then I'll bring it on the list. Maybe that's his option, he came to do it.
I don't like those people get wrong, and they don't know anything.
He said.
So, so you can, it's going to be tough to deal with, you know.
But he also did say that if we wanted, uh, something like the road out to this park for gravel? Said he, they basically charged for the gravel in there, and they can't make it off. So, it's just a matter of, we can walk it through, and find a good time to help us with that, if we do want to have that.
Actually, we have, we have this one.
Okay. That's funny, because I know.
Um, one of the other things that I was going to talk about, I don't remember if I talked about it last month, but sort of kind of power, getting it in the line. Um, it's small, you can in, you want it to be like a thousand dollars, and he's, it's something.
Two. It isn't for two thousand. So I reckon on power, it's twenty to all those cities for.
They can use her, and he's, he's, but it's probably somebody with the personal stuff, or, or just whatever you have in your city. And.
So there's the.
They do grants to, you can do five, ten thousand dollars, because they're really spending that hard. They, they'll be that.
So some of the, some of the things we talked is, I kind of want to do, do community service projects. So we'll get that money next year, and then, and then next, uh, obviously, spring and summer, we'll use that to do some service projects. For people that can't, or kids, or whatever. So as we lose some things this year, we'll use that, and, and, and he likes to see that, and, and people will help us. Like, or, 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 or. Our communities will actually do some.
Other people, it's not for the state, or, I mean, it's like, uh, sale tax, for like their funds, they're all, they're all in. It's exactly like five percent. Because we want, um, it's not. So they send hope, or quotas, and, and, and literally, and now. We want to say one hundred.
Okay, is that everything?
So, this is, and I, I can do this about this, and something on your brain, it's, it's. Why are you, somebody was over there, rinsing out their cement truck on the side of the road? Do we have to have, you know, some of that property, I mean? I don't know, was there a property or what? It's over here, um, I don't know, is there an house, set up in your house? I don't know if it is set up in the, yeah. So.
Who are they?
I wonder if they've got a water shade lot? Or the town, maybe they're, 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 they're.
Uh, right away.
Because like, kind of, like, on the opposite side of the street, you can down, you know, for sales. So, can you, you know, that, lots of weird, and then I'll come around, and it's, uh, uh, trying to, yeah, why didn't that hurt?
What's in the, in the?
No, because anything that gets across from, you know, the house. I could have told you that, number of us.
I could have, uh, I could have seen it. No, but I, yeah. I did, after, and it was just, and there, it was just, it was just, it's, I mean, it's like, next time I can, it's weird, a lot.
I did, after Edward's, it's, I'm, we, and there, it was just, there, it's, I mean, it's like, my...
So, this is about that.
Where are these?
Well, if it's in the right way, if it can do it, right.
It's all, yeah. It's on that bar.
Where exactly? I just remembered, I said, I don't know.
So, that's why I look into it, if it's in the concrete, probably, down there.
Because I don't know if there's a list there, or if somebody was just saying, "Oh, look, there's a spot." That's always sort of...
Technically, they definitely didn't have that, so they didn't go, they didn't want to, right, they're both, so they're not gonna drive a couple miles to, to, to...
I mean, the person was there, or?
I mean, they probably had some, so we're right there.
Oh, okay.
I had a, I had a, I had a, you know.
Yeah, see, we need to have a, we're, it's also, it's really, we need to, they need to, they don't, they don't, they're right to be in that, they need to, it's, 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 right, they're there. Technically, they should, uh, they're, you know.
Well, it's, I said, it's on, it's, uh, on, very, and, 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 and... George, Ron?
Yeah, okay. All there. All right, we're done.